I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight for the many blessings that you bless us with and thank you for them. We pray as we enter this meeting, we pray that you take charge of it. We know that you are with us in your guidance and direction in our daily lives and in the business we'll look at tonight. Lead each citizen in this town and help us to be able to represent them well and help us to do our job to the best of our abilities. Pray that you guide us in the things we do in this town. Help us to look to you for that, the needs that we have and meet those needs with your guidance again. Be with us and forgive us our sins where we fail you, strengthen us in our lives daily and help us to be example for you in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. We'll have roll call from our clerk, Ms. Wilson.
Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman dated August 9th, 2022. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Demby. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
May I let the record show that a form of the board is present in accounting.
Okay, all right, we're in session. I'm going to ask if you have the minutes in front of you. Is there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes. Motion made by Alderman Probst. There, second.
Second.
Say goodbye Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we get into the public comments section on our agenda items, I need to add two items to our agenda. One of them is going to be adding the accompanying beer and liquor license to the Vidalia Shell Station. We want to add that for us to be able to get them approved tonight for that. That would be in addition. And then adding a 10th item to our agenda, which would be the board discussion and vote on approval of a resolution to award contract for drainage improvements to Camo Construction in the amount of $756,629.25. I will take one at a time. Can we add? I need a unanimous approval by the board, vote by the board to add these to the agenda. Can I hear a motion to add the adding the beer and liquor license for Vidalia Shell?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. There, second.
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just to hear. None. So that is added to the agenda. Second thing is item number 10. Can I hear a motion to add this that I stated earlier to the agenda? Hear a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. There, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, those are now on the agenda. So now we're going to start into our meeting. The first thing we have on our agenda is public comments on our current agenda items. Is there anybody in the public that has a question on any of our agenda items? If not, we're going to go ahead and get into our agenda. First thing we have is Ms. Deborah Moke, our CPA. And our accountant is going to do our present of financial statements for June of 2022.
These financial statements include the balance sheet as of June 30th, 2022, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2022, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of $16.6 million, including restricted funds of $13.5 million in the hydro fund and $1.4 million in the sales tax fund, investments of $4.6 million, including $2.4 million in the hydro reserve fund and $1.5 million in the general fund and $705,000 of ARPA funds. Total assets are $54.1 million, total liabilities are $11 million, for a fund balance of $43 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2022 indicates combined revenues of $48.6 million, total expenditures of $36.5 million, for a change in net position of $12.1 million. These financial statements are not in final version form. Adjustments will be made before the final trial balance is sent to the auditors. These financial statements are being compared to the amended budget passed by the Aldermen before year end. Only the general fund and special revenue funds were amended along with beginning fund balances for all funds. Overall, total revenues were at 100% of budget, expenses were at 101% of budget, transfers in and out were at 107% of budget, and the change in net position was at 97% of budget. The overall change in net position amounted to $12.1 million, while the budget was $12.4 million, which is a difference of $350,000 budget over actual. We have borrowed $4.4 million on the transmission line and substation date to cover materials, engineering costs, legal fees incurred, and securing portions of the rights of ways from the landowners. The project began in 2020. We have received the appraisal for the last remaining portion of land on for the right of way and are prepared to take necessary steps to move forward on the acquisition. We have reached a standstill on construction until the property is acquired. We are still working with FEMA to recover emergency work and debris removal costs caused by the 2021 storm, winter storm. The largest portion of the categories has been obligated and we should be receiving these funds soon. We have received approximately $100,000 in total to date. The town has received approximately $705 of the $1.4 million allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan. The money is on the balance sheet as a special revenue fund. None of this money has been spent and is being held in liability until the funds are expensed. The remaining $705,000 will be sent later this year. The money is not included in the current budget and any expenses paid using these funds will need board approval. To date, we have reserved approximately $128,000 of the ARPA funds to offset the July and August power cost adjustment on utility bills to all customers of Vidalia. The usage of the ARPA funds for this purpose was approved by the Board of Alderman. It will take a couple of months for me to get the final financial statements in final form to give to the auditors. This will give the auditors enough time to complete their audit by the end of December. Due to the amount of federal funds received in the 2021-22 fiscal year, they will perform additional audit procedures.
Deborah, is your mic on? Is that mic on, Casey?
I might not have been talking into it.
Oh, is there any questions from the council on Deborah? I can't say enough about the work that they, her and her staff does. And I want to also recognize our department heads and supervisors. You know, we do a budget each year and these guys, you know, we have capital outlay, they ask for things and they usually check with us. And if they really don't need them throughout the year, a lot of times we don't, they don't spend the money. And they, they have been very good about, you know, being very frugal running the town. I want to thank them publicly for the job they do every day out there, you know, saving us money and doing the best, giving the best services to our town. Because it means a difference. If you look at this budget, I mean, they hit their budget numbers and actually under budget. And I really appreciate the work they do and everybody does in the town. So, all right, Deborah, thank you then. So there's no questions. We're going to move on then. We're going to go to our discussion and vote on approval of occupational license applications. The first one is Vidalia Shell. Harvinder, is that how is that name? Is that your?
Yes, Harvinder.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's the old Be Quick station that, that your change of ownership, okay? And you're also asking for the accompanying beer and liquor license.
Yes, sir.
And you have that there. Is there any questions? Anybody have? If not, entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all very much for, if you need anything, just let us know. We appreciate y'all doing business in Vidalia. Okay, the next one you have when you leave us is actually outside the city limits. We will not address that. So we're going to skip on down to the Ms. Lou I care, Ms. Bridget Milliken on 202 Advocate Road. That's an optometry practice. Do I hear a motion to accept her occupational license?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Brent, say goodbye Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next thing we have is Milliken Family Dentistry by Mr. Dr. Tom Milliken on 202 Advocate Road versus dental practice.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have the sign applications, which is the Milliken Properties LLC on 202 Advocate Road. I hear a motion. We accept that sign application.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. There, a second.
Second.
Say goodbye Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have a sign application by, on the Hair Hut, which was a change of ownership. We've done the occupational license and this is approval for her sign. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, board discussion and vote to partnership with Home with Heroes Foundation, Reeds Across America. Mr. Mark LaFrancis is here. Mr. LaFrancis, we did this last year as a board and as a town, and he's here again today. You want to go ahead and refresh him, Mark, on what this does and what this will do with our support?
Thank you for having me. I'm Mark LaFrancis, president of the Home with Heroes Foundation, a 501(c)(3) pure nonprofit. We are based in Natchez, but we help people in Vidalia Concordia, and we will continue to do so. I have a little semi-annual report. I think each of you have got that. Because a lot of folks say, well, where the heck does the money go and what do they do? Well, this tells folks, there's some on the table back here, what we do. This is just some of the things we do, the highlights of our January through July. One of the things I'm planning to do that isn't on this list is to conduct a Veterans Resource Clinic here in Vidalia sometime in the fall. But I'm having trouble getting a certified Veteran Service Officer. It's important that when you have a clinic, you just don't have people gather. You have to have somebody who is certified with the VA to be able to answer questions. So as soon as I can get that put together, I'll let everybody know and we'll hopefully get a lot of veterans. We also have on the table back there, a new project, a Helping Hands for Veterans project. We do free yard and home improvements for veterans. We've already got a couple over here in Vidalia that we're helping, and we, everything's free. Everything that Home with Heroes does, we do not charge, we never have, and we never will charge any veteran a dime for our services. So all that we need is some information from a veteran, and we'll even entertain a loved one, say a widow, who was a widow, a veteran, who needs help, and we do as much as we can with the money we have. But speaking of the money, we raise money through chiefly Reeds Across America. I think you're familiar with that. That happens every year at three cemeteries. Last year was the first time we had the honoring of the graves of veterans at the Vidalia Cemetery. We also coordinate the Natchez National Cemetery, where most of all of the reeds are placed, and Green Lawn Memorial Park. So we have three cemeteries where honoring veterans. And this next Reeds Across America program is December 17th. It's always Saturday. It's December 17th. So you'll see information in the media, and please come out, join us, place reeds. It's pretty neat. For those who have not done it, for those who have done it, they know how much it means to the veterans and their families. And by the way, for all you veterans in the audience and here on the board, thank you for your service. So we are requesting funds again, showing you how we spend the money and what we're going to spend more money on and about the Reeds Across America program, and we're still proud to do it. You know, the Vidalia Cemetery doesn't have a lot of veterans that we have identified buried there. So we have used the additional money that above and beyond those reeds that go to the Vidalia Cemetery for the Natchez National Cemetery. We figure you would, wouldn't mind us to do that, to honor them as well, especially the unknown U.S. soldier graves. And many of those were buried in the levees way back in a long time ago. So we honor those as well. I'll answer.
I know we have a lot of Vidalia residents over in the Natchez Cemetery as well. We have.
We try to identify them. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. LaFrancis? Any questions? Okay, so what, what did we do last year?
A $3,000.
How much?
A thousand.
Okay, and can y'all want to do the same this year? Do I hear a motion from the board to do the same?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. There, a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. LaFrancis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Excuse me, I have another meeting to run too.
Pardon?
I have another meeting.
No, that's quite all right. You go ahead. I don't blame you.
I like that. That's already funny.
All right, moving on. We have board discussion and vote on approval of resolution to award a contract of roadway improvements to TL Construction Company LLC in the amount of $558,225.75. And you have the bids in your packet. I think we had two bids. So if you look at that, no, we might have just had one bid. It's the only bid we had. But this is going to be the improvements to Lee, Dotson, Dogwood, Dandridge, North Magnolia, and Plum. So is there any questions on that?
This was in the scope of what we thought it would cost.
Yeah, yeah, and we have some monies left over. Of course, we, yeah, we budgeted money for this next round that we're going to look at. And we'll identify those streets. We'd be getting out, Lee and I are already working on a list. And if anybody is out in the public or listening on Facebook or going to watch this later, if they'll get with us and want us to come, you know, look at your street and see, you know, if you have some needs on, if you think it needs to be overlaid, we will. There's no reason why we shouldn't. John, I tell you, our sales tax numbers are strong still. It's just, we've really been blessed as a town. That's signs of growth and progress, and I really appreciate everybody doing what they're doing. So do I hear a motion? We accept this bid?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst to accept the bid. There, a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will start getting in touch with them, trying to get them to move as quickly as possible to get this done before we get in any cold weather or bad weather. Okay, the next thing we have is board discussion and vote on approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Vidalia and Monterey Fire Department to convey the Monterey Fire Department a surplus fire truck. We have our Assistant Chief, Mr. Doug Honeycutt, here. If you have any questions, I'm going to let Mr. Honeycutt answer those. Any questions from the council? I'm sure Monterey will appreciate this.
I've talked to Jim Graves, who is the chief there. He wanted to let you all know if it went through that. He very much appreciates it, and if there's anything he could do in response to help us, he's more than happy to do so.
And just to piggyback that with, they went, Assistant Chief Honeycutt and Inspire Chief Johnny went with, and they picked up our, went and looked at the other new unit, and it's really, really a very nice unit addition to our fleet of fire trucks. And they did a good job on selecting. It's really a nice unit.
We thank you all for approving us and letting us go. I think it's going to be a really good bid for us.
Tell them about, just a little bit about how much you think we saved, I mean, as long as you've got it right there. Because we saved a ton. Tell them about how much you think we saved.
We figured that that technical unit would be, when it was bought new in 2006, it was $368,000. If we were to buy the same unit new now, it would be well over $850,000. It was taken, every 10 years, it gets, it was taken back to the factory and put to back to factory specs. So that's the way they do it up there. And every 20 years, no matter what, they get rid of. But we've got practically a new truck for what we gave, $130,000.
That's a good lick there.
Biggest pump of anything we have. It's got more wheels and whistles than we could have afforded to get every.
Well, y'all did a good job on that. So, all right, do I hear a motion? We approve the, thank you, Doug. Do I hear a motion? We approve the intergovernmental agreement between Town of Vidalia Monterey Fire Department to convey the Monterey Fire Department the surplus fire truck?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. There, a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next thing we have is the board discussion and vote on approval for the Vidalia Police Department. Well, this is for a full-time school resource officer, Mr. Dale Sendle. Any questions on that? Frankie's here with the police department to answer any questions on that.
Is this a new hire?
Oh, yes, it is a new hire. Is there any questions? I know that our schools are back open and there is a, there is police presence at all of our schools. I think it's nice to see when you go riding around and you see that, those units sitting there. You know, it's just a, just a nice, nice thing to do that we can do and glad to do for our schools. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve that, that hire?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. There, a second.
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, something we haven't had before. We have had blighted property updates, but we have Mr. Frank Doucet here. He is our code enforcement officer, and he's just going to give us a little update on some of the things he's been working on, some of the blighted. We started back on the blighted issues on some properties that we want to make sure that we get cleaned up in town. So Frank, to set that table, I wanted to just say that, you know, some of the things that Frank does, he will, he will be around town. You know, people putting out yard, I mean, signs where they're advertising for fixture credit or construction things. Frank, if he sees those, he'll pick those up. If you, if you're listening and you have put out signs around town, you can find it at his office up by the house.
He's in my office.
But he will be picking those up. Also, he'll be looking at, he looks around at our yard cuttings, our, you know, our, people's got too much debris that's within sight of the road or from another, things like that, abandoned vehicles on the road. It's some, a lot of those things, what he's done. Now, there's, there's work to be done. I'm not going to say that just that everything's perfect because everything's changing. But what we do have right now, there is a process in place that our ordinance calls it, when somebody, their first call is when their grass gets two feet high, two feet. And that's, that's in our ordinance book. You know, there's some things we can look at, council can look at, maybe if they want to change to reduce that or whatever, we can do it at a later date. But this is some things we deal with, and you got to notify these people by a certified letter to cut it. Frank could go by and visit with them. They have 10 days to respond to a letter, a certified letter, once they get it. And then if they don't, then the town has to advertise, and that's a, that's a lengthy process depending on when in the week that you start this process. You got to advertise so much, and then you got to put out the bid for these people, I mean, to get their grass cut. It's been, it's been, starting to rain a good bit, so the grass is starting to grow.
That ain't a good thing.
We've been, we've been lucky through the spring. It's pretty dry. But anyway, Frank, go ahead and just, and go over some of the things that you, that you got done and talk to us a little bit. Tell them about where we're at on blighted properties and starting that process back up.
Okay, as you know, my name is Frank Doucet. I'm the code enforcement slash this slash that. But as far as blighted properties, we just now started the court back up. We were shut down slightly due to COVID. So we're getting back into the flow of things. We have several judgments that we got to finalize. We have a upcoming court date, hopefully in September on that. So we should, we should start seeing some more properties being taken care of, cleaned off. But we have so far this year, we've done, if you ever been down Pecan Street, that property that was burnt on Pecan Street, we've taken care of that. You know, and we have several that the owners have taken care of themselves. We've told them what the violation was and what it looks like. If we have to take care of it, they decide to take care of this. So as far as blighted, we're looking good. It's getting better and better every day.
What actually happened on that pecan? It wasn't illegal? Wasn't it illegal, something?
It was tied, I checked into that, and with the insurance companies, it actually adjudicated back to either the town or the parish.
Yeah.
Right, that's what happened. That's what I thought.
We got, we got into the same issue. Y'all remember the building by Eastland's up there that was sited for so long?
Same, same thing we ran into.
The parish said they weren't going to clean it up, so we finally just got to a point where we said, you know, well, we got to do something, and we did it and just attached it to the property.
It's a tax row. Yeah, it'll go on their tax row.
The thing is too, just for mention, is the Dandridge property.
Yeah, the Dandridge property, it is one of the judgments that we're waiting to put it back in court to get a finalization on. And then that'll be another property we'll advertise, and we'll put it out for bid and proceed with it.
One other thing, what about the one on Lynn Street? I keep getting questions.
The two-story, 414 Lynn Street. It is one that is on the list, but we haven't, it's, we're still trying to locate people to come into court.
Right.
You know, once we get someone, because you got to properly serve someone. So once we properly serve, then we can bring them into court and.
One of the respective people that lives out of town. I think they're sick. I think they're sick as well.
All right, so, and then that one will be on, man. We have the two down on South Spruce. They're, they're going to come back up. So it's going to take off here in the coming months. You're going to see more and more progress as far as blighted. And as he spoke on your grass cutting jobs, it's a process. I mean, I wish I could go out there and say, hey, you're cited, I need you to get it straight, but the legality behind it doesn't dictate we do that.
But the problem, and one thing that I think we do need to do is change that ordinance.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Because we're looking at, we're looking at a process that's taking.
Too long.
Four cuts a year, basically. What we determined in a meeting before, four cuts a year is all they got to cut. But yet everybody else in Vidalia has to cut theirs every two weeks at least or to keep it from getting.
Right.
Two feet.
And I do, I think we need to dress the height up, two feet really is high.
That's way, I mean, that's way out of sight.
Because what happens, especially if somebody does have a push mower, it gets two feet high. They can't push.
I can't get it. It becomes complicated.
That is, I'd like to see us rewrite that.
Well, I would love to meet with whoever we have over that board and we address those because there's a lot of other concerns that we would also like to bring forward and get them changed where they're being more in compliance with what we're doing.
And we could set up a fee schedule. There's a fee schedule now in our, in our ordinance book. It goes with your regular, your nuisances. It's considered a nuisance in the fee schedule book. I think the first offense, 50 bucks, the next one's 100, 150. I think the third one's 500.
It's five, it can graduate to five.
I feel like that all needs to be relooked at.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with that.
One other thing I'd like to see that has been brought up, I think, in the past is a, I'd like to see Frank have a car. If we're still working on it, he's.
It's been ordered. Well, we.
There's a whole supply chain problem.
Still holding.
There's 20 something units that need.
Still got, okay.
There's, they're still projected and could be first.
It's going to have to be a big car. It's a lot to put in that little vehicle.
It's a, no, it's, it's been, it's been ordered for, well, yeah, when y'all approved it.
Right, I mean, I couldn't remember if he was included in those cars.
Enterprise, enterprise.
He is in that bunch, okay. That's why I want to be sure he was getting something, because we do need him of the presence out there, you know, as far as his car. People see that coming.
I agree. Any questions, any other questions for Frank? Anybody? Brent, John, Tommy, you got any more? Okay, Frank, thank you very much. I know, I know that you take a lot of tongue lashing by people, but anyway. But anyway, it's something that we'll work on, and if people are listening, if you have something that you think you might need looked at, Frank.
The numbers posted on the website?
Posted on the website, Frank Doucet, code enforcement. Give him a shout. He'll come look at it, whether it's, you know, abundance of trash or, you know, noxious odors coming from.
It can even be, it can even be some kind of an animal situation, even though you have Neil, you still tend.
That's what a nuisance is for.
Yeah, so, all right, well, thank you very much, Frank, for that. Now, I just have a few updates, and then one of the things is going to be coming up pretty quick. Jay's still in touch with on the redistricting, redistricting that.
Reaportment.
Reaportment, yeah, reaportment. Let's call it reaportment. So let's, let's call it that. That's going to be coming up here pretty quick, right?
He is, he's going to, what Mr. Dr. Flair is planning to do is come up with two, make three proposals first, and then meet with the board members individually, go over what he's looking at, and get your feedback. And we're planning a special meeting, hopefully in September, just to, just for him to present this, those different proposals after he's talked to you individually, and have the folks come in and look at this, and hopefully the board can decide that meeting, that which direction to go. Then we'll have ordinances to draft, introduce, and then vote on. So we'll have everything in place by the end of the year.
And that, that'll be. And that that'll be, we'll be within the law if we do that, get it done by the end of the year. Of course, we will have an election before the end of the year, but it's basically not going by districts, and you don't have to worry about that, it's basically an at-large election, so we don't have to worry about getting it done before November, so we're in good shape there. Speaking of numbers, you know, the new census, so I got a letter from the, the Secretary of State that our census was announced wrong the first time, it was under 4,000, we got it's just over, it's north of 4,000, the new numbers that they corrected, there was a typo error in it that they found, and they fixed it, and it's just, it's north of 4,000, so that's just for information. The SLU project, as you know, the funding letter has been issued, now the final draft and design is being done on the SLU project, which would be the drainage for the SLU area, and that's going to be funded through DOTD in State Louisiana. We also have, that's probably going to see probably material being moved in maybe almost a year to have this completed bid and a final design. We have several projects that are, one, dealing with all of our sewer improvements through brick and water sector program. We've, we applied for a lot of our improvements, whether it's our our water plant expansion, raising water wells, our sewer improvements, whereas the aeration are this other, increasing the flow to and from the ponds to the river. All this, we've applied for under water sector monies, as well as going through brick, which would be the improvements on the sewer that we have the problem when it's, the water's high and we have seepage issues, but hopefully we'll be finding out pretty quick on that. One of the things that they're going to do with this, we're going to discuss in this next thing, is which is going to be a, an improvement, is a project that we're going to approve, and I'll go and tell you what that is. The project came in, you know, we had behind Oak Street all the way up to Concordia, behind Stampley and and Oak, there's a problem, our, that drainage all through there was deteriorating, and it's going to have to be completely redone, dug up, and that's going to be in this, this contract that we're going to try to approve next, as well as they're going to repair the Concordia Avenue all the way to the ditch, that that culvert there that goes under, right there, goes behind Viking and all that, that culvert's not substantial enough to carry the stormwater there, that's probably going to be pulled up completely and redone, as well as then clean the ditch all the way to the highway. They're also going to repair Concordia, I mean, the Lillian Drive issue, as far as the flooding there at Lillian Drive, if you live on Lillian and Bill Johnson, you know, when we get a two or three quick rain, two or three inch of rain, it floods in that area. You can't hardly get through that street, it goes up in yards, this, this bid is going to correct that. And there's a few other little things they're going to look at as well, that's going to deal strictly with drainage on this next, this next approval that we're going to look at. Some of the events that we've got coming up, that we're going to be looking at, next, next Monday, again, makes, put it out there, hydro meetings next Monday, the 15th, and then the following Monday are going to be hydro meetings. The ordinance calls for that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen compile a list of projects to be presented to the public for their consideration, and I think at that time, we would also entertain thoughts, which y'all would like to see, I don't think there's a problem with that as we move forward, okay? So I think I'm going to be asking the Alderman company, you know, if there's something they'd like to see us do, you know, bring it up, you know, to our, to our public, and we'll try to come up with a list and try to tackle those this year. So that's this coming Monday and the following Monday at 6 o'clock here in this, this office. There's going to be an open car show to benefit the Vidalia Junior High, I think Vidalia Junior High was in the news when they had the vandalism, this car show is going to benefit the Vidalia Junior High School, and that's going to be on Saturday, September 24th, Dusty and DeShay Oaks are going to be putting on a car show that's going to benefit them. On August 30th, there's going to be a christening for American Cruise Lines, their new ship, the Symphony, which is a very nice ship, it's going to be in Natchez, they're going to christen it on the 30th. For all the fishermen out there, on the 24th, by the 24th, Louisiana Department of Wildlife Fisheries are going to restock our pond with with more catfish, we recently had a fish kill over at the pond, we, one of our, our aerator went out and had to pull it. We tried to do all we could to keep the water aerated with pumps and and water flowing into it and all, but we did lose some rough fish, and we did lose some other species, but I promise you, there's still fish in that pond. And and that's probably one of the problems, there's so many fish in it, you know, they, they breathe on oxygen, and if all the oxygen being used up by too many fish in the pond, they, that's what they breathe, is dissolved oxygen. And the only thing that puts dissolved oxygen in the pond is plants can put, underwater plants can put it in there, and also just any kind of air, you know, turbulence, turning water, Cornell knows all of that by our sewer ponds that are, about aeration there. So anyway, put that down, next stock-in will be by September 24th, which will be the National Hunting and Fishing Day by Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. We'll have the balloon race on the 14th and 15th and 16th, Vidalia's going to have activities this year. I'm pretty sure we'll have flea market, carnival, and some other things there, some food booths and stuff for. And if, if anybody would like to pick up and try to look at any kind of entertainment at the, at our amphitheater, I think would be a nice time to do that as well, so that's coming up in October. And on October 29th, the police department's going to have, you know, Bless the Blue or Back the Blue, they're going to have a car show on October 29th, and then they're going to have a, a big, and all this is going to be at the RV Park, by the way, not at the River Park, and then they're going to have a big barbecue competition on October 28th and 29th, and Operation Grits is helping them do this, so that's what I have right now, and now I'm going to go to the next thing. Any question about any of those events that I mentioned or any of the projects? So the next thing we have is board discussion and vote on approval of a resolution to award a contract for drainage improvements to Camo Construction in the amount of $756,629.25. Is there any questions? You have the bids there, that was low bid, we had two other bids, one was $972,000 and some change, and the other was $837,000. So this one was $756,629.25. And it's going to address some of our flooding issues, if y'all have noticed, when we took those, those culverts out down the extension of Murray Drive, behind Vidalia Market, it didn't flood on Concordia Avenue as bad, or or at all, since we've removed all those culverts. Those culverts would stop up and wouldn't allow that water to go, and we hadn't had a problem since we removed them. Now, we're watching those power lines, because they're leaning a little bit, but we, we hope we've got a solution for that if it keeps on, if it gets any worse, we might need to check that and see if they are giving any, but, but they, we haven't flooded since we've removed all those, those structures, so. Any questions on the, on the word on the contract on the drainage improvements? Anybody? Do I hear a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no, nothing else on the agenda, I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, Alderman Smith, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank y'all very much for coming.